This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening and welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Business Meeting and Budget Review for April the 10th, 2018. To begin with this evening, we offer the opportunity for public participation. Any members of the public here in attendance that wish to address the board may do so. If you have a question or a comment or a statement that you'd like to make, you're welcome to do so. We ask that you raise your hand, be recognized. I'll ask you to step to the podium and give us your name and address and your question or comment. So is there anyone here who wishes to address the board this evening? All right, seeing that we have none this evening, Board, may we please have a motion for approval of our agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Marv and seconded by Martha. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Two sets of minutes tonight. Could we have a motion, please, to approve the minutes from the March 13, 2018 Business Meeting and the March 20, 2018 Budget Review?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Larry and seconded by Andrea. Does anyone have any corrections, additions, or deletions to either of those?
I think I was not in attendance at March 13th. Can I vote on that or no? Do I need to abstain about that? Does that matter?
Um, I think you can hope that you weren't there.
I think about that I was there.
It's duly noted.
Yeah, that's okay. You're noted that you had to leave early that evening in the thing there, I see. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item of business this evening, you have in front of you, well, let's first ask for a motion, please, to approve a seeker for proposed 2018-2019 capital projects. May we have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Karen and seconded by Martha. This is the state-required process procedure. Anytime we have a project, a building project, where potential actions take place that come under the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, seeker, that's the acronym. And so this finding that we have this evening and is posted, as with all of our agenda material, online under the Agenda for this evening, presented to us by Lou, essentially clarifies that we are the agency in charge, if you will, and we have the response, or referred to as the 2018-2019 capital projects. So these are the projects that are planned for this upcoming off-season, if you will. Does anyone have any questions or further comment? Or this is some of the formality, really, that we have to go through for every project. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And this evening, we are scheduled to make a final review and an adoption of our 2018-2019 budget and the property tax report card. So to begin that process, I turn it over to Dr. McGowan for a budget update and review.
Thank you very much. This has cut down out only 47 slides, so we're in good shape. I'm just kidding. This is a very quick summary, as I mentioned to you.
Funny guy.
There is virtually no change from what was presented in the March meeting, the last meeting when we presented the executive budget proposal to you. I will point out our revenue has changed slightly. We did receive slightly more stated than we had budgeted for, but we were able to simply change some of our revenue projections. So the actually adopted budget we would ask you to act on tonight to prepare for taxpayers to vote on in May is not changed. That's the spending plan that is being voted on and the levy that is needed to support that spending plan. The revenue projections allowed us to change what we were using in appropriated fund balance and have a little, slightly less reliance on essentially the savings account to pay for expenses into next year. But it wasn't enough aid that it could dramatically change any of our approach to spending or hiring or any of those strategies, which I'll detail for you here. So one of the things that we looked at, again, just to quickly go through the summary of this budget at this point, we looked at our instructional leadership, professional development programs, our coaching supports, academic intervention services, supports beyond the mandate, summer school offerings, class size, and course offerings at all levels, the team teaching structure at the middle school, interscholastic athletic opportunities, and all the different co-curricular opportunities for our kids, and transportation services. And in the course of that review, found some different places for efficiency, including a proposal to change our walking distance slightly at particular levels. To balance the budget, we are recommending in the executive budget proposal and for your consideration and adoption, a freeze on our full-time equivalency hiring except in areas for health, safety, or security. So we have budgeted some funds if we do decide to take on any additional security measures and in some small changes in positions that are required around health and safety. We are going to be scaling our staffing based on enrollment trends, which means a reduction of a position at the elementary level, which I will detail for you in a moment, reducing our overtime allocation also for operations and maintenance, which will have an impact on building accessibility for outside groups in the evening and weekends, increasing our reliance on federal grants, reducing pressure on the general funds. We are budgeting some more of our work, our programs in federal grant programs that we do receive funding. We mention that because that's a volatile area relative to what could be cut by the federal government later on. We feel comfortable right now that we're making safe bets in terms of budgeting some programming within those grants in areas that we don't see there being a reduction and deferring slightly our planning for full-day kindergarten. That doesn't mean deferring the timeline. We will still have full-day kindergarten in 2021, but instead of encumbering additional positions in current year budget or next year's budget to help pay for that, we've reduced that type of planning going forward, which will have an impact in later budgets that we will need to address. But in this year's budget, it didn't seem to make sense to cut current program to the safer program that's not on the docket yet. It's not part of our programming. We're also looking at all other expenses, implementing program caps in terms of some of the elective programming through BOSI's, the OCED program, some of our co-curricular activities and extracurricular activities as well. We are going to be very carefully monitoring how many clubs we're able to offer and the interest level, looking at ways we can combine some clubs and activities where necessary, where there are still plenty of opportunities for kids, but where we might be able to be a little bit more efficient. We're going to limit our equipment budget to those that we need, the equipment we need to maintain our current program, so no new equipment for any new type of approach, and tightening up basically our budget risk provisions or the extra in lines to make sure that we don't go over budget. We're tightening up some of those risk provisions as well. And some of the funding for our future debt service. So in other words, that building into our capital reserve more money for down payment to reduce some of our debt service later on, we're deferring some of that funding as well. Same idea as the full-day K planning. It doesn't make sense to have to cut program now because we're that close in terms of the aid we're receiving and the property tax cap. To cut program now in order to save money later on just didn't seem to make sense. When we can do that in other years, it's prudent budget planning, but we're not willing to sacrifice student programming for that at this point, but it'll have an implication later on we'll need to keep in mind. The class size reduction, or I'm sorry, the class size shift and the reduction in staff that I mentioned to you at the elementary level, our fourth grade this year has 13 sections in it, 17, 18, all the way on the left. The fourth grade, so the next year's fourth graders, will be 12 sections. That same group of kids is 12 sections right now in third grade. So it's a smaller group moving, resulting in one less section than at French Road. So we'll have one program, one position change again, have French Road at the elementary level. A quick word on the financial trends. If you look over time back to 2007, 2008, the blue line is the original budget. So the budget that taxpayers approve, the dotted line right under that are the actual expenditures. So that is the margin, if you will, between those two lines is what can go to fund balance and then for the next year, help knock down the levy just a little bit. So it's the money that's left at the end of the year, so the difference between the actual expenditures and what the budget expenditures are. Our average increase in the budget since that time has only been 3% and our average actual increase in dollar spend has been just 2.6%. And the difference between those has been able to go to fund balance. Our tax levy has all only gone up an average of 2.3% over that same period of time, while state aid and federal aid has increased 3.7% over time. Keep in mind that 3.7%, although that might sound like a great number, it's actually a relatively small number compared to our even smaller numbers here in terms of our own spending and our own tax increases. It appears a little bit larger, but it includes reimbursable aids. So where we've depended more and more on the reimbursements that the state is supposed to be providing, this isn't benevolence, it's not a gift, it's the reimbursement for expenses that the state is supposed to be covering, that number has gone up as well. And then our budget fund balance and reserves have been able to increase over time of $2.7 million, which has helped us again to plan prudently for the use of fund balance towards the tax levy, but also for capital expenditures and the other areas where reserves help us stay away from using the general fund. For example, the technology reserve, which has allowed us to shift most of our technology purchasing into an area which is coming out of savings account as opposed to out of the general fund each and every year. Quick summary of the particular objects on the spending side and a couple of the highlights. We're up in terms of, we're almost even in terms of salaries. Now, that doesn't mean that people will not receive contractual increases that we've negotiated over time. It means that the number of people in those categories, because we are not adding staff, the total amount spent in the salary category will only go up 1.3%. That has nothing to do with the individual increases to salaries. That's the total spending in that line. Meanwhile, benefits will go up 5.7%. That includes the retirement system, that includes health insurance, all of their benefits. The health insurance and retirement system costs are largely out of our control. The retirement system is simply billing us. We do not have a retirement program here. Those are state systems. And the health insurance, we've been able to keep that cost relatively lower. Those increases relatively small compared to community-rated plans by participating in the local consortium plans. And so the pace of that has slowed, although we're seeing an increase in the number of people participating in those plans as well. We're looking at an increase in materials and services, supplies about 9%, but that's only a $350,000 increase in a $76 million budget overall. So we feel pretty confident that in terms of the material supplies needed to do the work, that's an appropriate increase. And then on the bottom side, it's just important to point out what percentage of the budget do these expenses make up? 48% of our budget is spent on salaries, 28% on benefits, so salary and benefits overall, 75%. That's an important number to point out because we are a people business and we want people to understand, actually, that that is where we are spending our money, that is where it should be going. It should be going towards the people that are working with kids each and every day to provide small class sizes, different types of approaches, differentiation of instruction. We should be investing in people and that is where the bulk of our spending is happening. And we'd like to make sure people understand that. Some of the other budget factors, the larger increases overall, up at the top, 18.9% in the area of business administration, but only up $17,000. We spend a relatively small amount of money there. And what that is, is the cost of doing audits that are required by the state. And those costs increase over time. We have to catch up now when we have new arrangements for those audits or additional expenses that have happened over time due to the audits, again, that are required by mandate by the state. And so the increased spending is due to that in that line. And then our special education contracts and tuitions, these are costs that are provided to us or given to us by outside providers, whether it's BOSI's or other private providers. They set the tuition. In fact, once again, I'll point out, New York State helps set those tuition. They have a rate-setting unit and those costs are simply given to us. We have to pay those tuitions. We don't at all begrudge any child the need that they have, the fulfillment of that need through those programs, but it's a reality in terms of the dollar and cents and we get billed for them. We should point out to people then what that cost will be. Debt service will go up just a little bit as we begin to ramp up towards our capital improvement plans. And our contract transportation by contract is going up. Those are negotiated. We saw relatively low increases in that for quite a long time. 3.3% is not outrageous by any stretch and that's an increase going into next year. So what does that mean in terms of a proposed budget summary and the impact on the tax levy? We are requesting an increase in the budget of $2.2 million or 2.95%. The total budget being proposed is $78,330,553. Again, that's a change of $2,247,602. The total revenues other than the real property taxes, so excluding the tax levy, we expect to go up 4.8%. The unrestricted foundation aid coming into the district will go up $370,000 or 4.9%. And the non-property tax revenues will go up $1.2 million as well. So overall, we're requesting an increase in the real property tax levy of 2.36% or up from $51,69,907 to $52,275,299. Again, 2.36% and tax levy compliant, which we'll point out in the tax levy report card in just a moment. Where does our revenue come from? We continue to want to point out to the community that we're paying the largest share of the bill, 67%. That's why state aid has such a big impact on us. We're already paying a big bill in this community. Any lack of state aid, continued lack of state aid, just adds to an already large bill and we're very aware of that. 67% being paid for in this community. Really important to remind people of the foundation aid issue of the last several years because many people would have thought due to the really great work and advocacy done in this community by Fight for Brighton, by you as school board members, by many people here internally, our state aid went up and our problem, so to speak, or our issue that we brought to the attention of our legislators was addressed in part. And what it meant was that by percentage, we are receiving a larger share of what we are due, but what we are due is the entire bar on this bar chart, the orange and the blue, we're only receiving the blue. But if you see where it says $1.1 million, that's where the additional fix last year was added to our base. It got us to a better place. We are still far underfunded relative to what we should be getting. We're just now in a very similar place to our neighbors who are also being underfunded relative to what people should be getting in foundation aid. It helped the problem, it didn't fix the problem, I think is the overall point. The larger problem is a statewide issue now that everybody is experiencing. So this is an addition to the last one. The resulting tax rate and the impact of the town reassessment is something that we wanted to point out. The tax levy, just to give people a quick primer again on each of these definitions, the levy is the amount of the money that the board, you, are allowed to raise in the community based on voter approval. So the levy is the amount that you can go out and collect from the community based on property value. The rate is the share of the levy that each taxpayer will pay. So that's the actual dollar per thousand that is applied to the value of your home to come up with your individual tax bill. Everybody's home and their property has a different value and depending on the number of thousands of dollars that your property is worth, the rate is applied to that value in order to get your tax bill. Our rate, you as a board will not collect a penny more in levy than what the voters approve. It's a question of how the bill gets divided up among property owners. It gets divided up based on your assessment. If your assessment overall in the town is to go down, the rate has to go up in order to mathematically accomplish the same amount of total collection of dollars. The assessments in town went up. The rate will go down. We will still be collecting the same amount of money in the tax levy. So when voters approve the tax levy, hopefully in May, they are approving the same dollar amount, no matter what their individual value is on their home, the same total value. So the assessed values, we don't set, the town sets those and people have a process for challenging that and working through that with the town, but the rate will be lower if one's assessment has gone up. We don't know the rate yet until the total value of the property in town is given to us. And we don't know that until late in the year. So in previous years, we've had a general sense of what the property values would be and we could tell people approximately in this town or in this town, this is generally what you're going to pay, this is your rate per thousand, and people had a pretty good handle on the value of their home. Now that assessments have been redone and assessments are in question, we can't give an assumed rate because the total value in the town has not been determined yet. As soon as we know that, we would very much like to pass that along. So again, a further illustration of the town reevaluation, the tax levy will go up 2.36%. Equalized increase in taxable assessment in the town of Brighton will go up 11%, but the net impact on the combined tax rate is a rate reduction of 8.6%. So a reduction. Again, the rate will go down as the values go up. We are now applying at a much higher value, so if people are worried about a higher value in their home, which many people are, they said all of a sudden I've got this much higher value, the rate will not be the same as it was last year and then your tax bill will go up that much more as a consequence. That will not happen. Your rate will go down if your value went up. So the total spending proposal again is $78.33 million, or up 2.95%. We believe by way of summary that this is responsibly controlling our increases in spending, that it will not harm our educational program, and that it also reflects our continued investment in all of the priority areas in the blueprint, safety, security, wellness, rigorous coursework for all students, creativity, innovation, instructional technology, and diversity, and equity. It is also tax cap compliant, 2.36% proposed increase in the tax levy. So what does that get you for the investment? Really important question for a consumer to be asking and we recognize that people are consumers. A 97% graduation rate for all Brighton students in the class of 2017. On average, Brighton students score almost 200 points higher on the SAT scores than other New York State public schools. 84% of Brighton graduates in class of 2017 went on to two and four-year colleges and 74% received a reading diploma with advanced distinction. Our high school offers more than 20 advanced placement courses and in 2017, that meant that 418 students wrote 975 exams. 90% of those exams scored a three or higher, then hopefully providing college credit in many colleges and universities across the country. The middle school was designated as a school to watch for the fifth time. Brighton High School recognized as a high-performing award school by the state. The high school also nominated for the National Blue Ribbon Award. Unique high school electives, energy, sustainability, video gaming, sports, entertainment, marketing, comparative religions, et cetera, and challenging academic opportunities like the SUPA program, which is an advanced placement program or dual college credit programs. We had seven semi-finalists in the 2018 National Merit Scholarship Competition and six commended students. Top honors in several categories for all three high school publications from the Empire State's Classic Press Association. Pretty great value on the dollar, we think, for the investment our community's making. A well-rounded education as well, ninth consecutive year designated as one of the best communities for music education, more than 2,000 students, grades four through 12 participate in our Corel and Esprit Music Program, 2,600 students visual performing arts programs, 250 participate in honors assemblies, 1,500 student roster slots on 72 athletic teams. Scholar-athlete team awards throughout our athletic program and a variety of competitions, academic, based at both the middle and the high school like FPLA, EQ, Fair Speech and Debate, Deca Model, UN Masterminds, more than 85 clubs at the middle and high school, and the full continuum of services for our students, including things like the AIM program, which has been a very successful alternative program for our students, very differentiated program, our GOAL program. The KEEP or the Extended Education Program for kindergarten students who need something different, an extra, outdoor education in sixth grade continues after several decades in action. Field trips that enhance the curriculum and provide real-world experiences, literacy, math, coaching support, the non-mandate IIS support, all these things we talked about at the beginning of the presentation are still protected in this budget. 21st century technology, extended studies opportunities, 21st century learning spaces being piloted throughout the district, in-storm music starting in fourth grade, which is very rare relative to our neighbors, excuse me, and anywhere in New York State, sixth grade foreign language, just not offered other places, elementary and high school summer school programs, and the morning shows at Fres, the middle school and the high school. So quite a bit four-year dollar. We think people are getting a great return on their investment. There's only one student in the room, so if we can provide and do these great things and have a result like Piper Davis, then everybody should vote for the budget because look at this great kid and what's happened. She started pretty great too, though. She did really well no matter what we did, let's face it. Piper's pretty fantastic either way. So the property tax report card that we do need to point out to the community, important to make note of new requirements, do call for an addition to the annual property tax report card to show a schedule of reserve funds as follows. So without me reading them all to you, this is posted online. It's part of the property tax report card that you will receive also at home, but something that we want to make sure that we make note of, the change in the property tax report card and that this information is all available to the community and that you, the board, have been presented with this as well. And then there's a withdrawal from a capital reserve fund. This will be, we will ask voters for approval to do this. The current balance is over $8.5 million. We'd like to withdraw $1.5 million to reauthorize the Chiller project at the middle school that came in way overbid several years ago. We have to go back and ask the community again for the opportunity to do that. And then construction of alterations, renovations throughout the buildings and transfer to the capital reserve funds, again, to further our plan to reduce our debt service payments over time based on the May referendum last year. And acquisition and installation in around the foregoing improvements of original furnishings, equipment, machinery, and apparatus. So essentially the motion and task for opportunity, withdraw $1.5 million for capital expenses. And then out of the technology reserve fund, the current balance is $1.5 million. We'd like to withdraw $500,000 to continue the implementation of our 21st century learning programs and includes eighth-grade tablets, digital infrastructure throughout the district, storage for our virtual servers, additional staff laptop requirements, and this is the regular cycling through. That's the only machine that our staff members use, that is their workstation. CAD lab replacements at the high school and device replacements K through 7, and then AV replacements throughout the district as well. We'd also like to propose the withdrawal of $125,000 to a bus purchase reserve set up several years ago and we did look at the opportunity, look at our own bus fleet. We've since determined that's not feasible, but the voters did approve a limited reserve at that point. We'd like to ask now for permission to use some of that money towards the purchase of three passenger vans that could be used for educational programs and extracurricular programs, both the transition program at St. John Fisher, but also field trips, co-curricular activities, and interscholastic activities. Those passenger vans will have plenty of seating for smaller groups. That'd be very helpful to have that type of flexibility. Hopefully we'll save money over time in terms of our contract transportation as well. We'd also like to ask the community for their approval to establish home-to-school eligibility distances for school-bus transportation. Changing our grades kindergarten to two to one-eighth of a mile. Currently, it's a quarter mile, so in fact, shrinking that zone. It's really much more in line though with what our practice is. When kids are that close, we are continuing in the neighborhoods around the elementary buildings to pick up, feeling that that's the safest thing to do, but we'd like the official permission from the community to do that by referendum. And grades three through five, a quarter mile, there's no change to that. Grade six through 12, three-quarters of a mile. Grade six is currently a quarter mile and grade seven through 12 are three-quarters of a mile. We have no idea why this is a historical issue and we could never change it because in a strange quirk of state law requires a voter referendum to change your walking distances. So we'd like to be consistent now with sixth graders in the building that they're with seventh and eighth graders who have a three-quarter mile walking distance, feeling that that is both healthy and appropriate for them to do that. Any questions for me?
Anything? No. Infamically. Thank you very much, Kevin. I think, you know, as you mentioned to start out, what you've presented and proposed and what we're about to vote on is pretty much where we've been for quite a while now. We are appreciative of the work of the state assembly, the state senate, and the governor at the end of the day to come up with a little bit more money for us. Joe Morelli certainly and Joe Robach, we appreciate their efforts. You and I both were in touch with them quite a bit leading up to that, not only on the funding side, but there were a number of issues with regard to education policy and education law that were in play right up to the end that really we felt were counterproductive and most of those did not get included in the budget. So we're appreciative of their efforts around that. We do look forward to working continuously with them moving forward on the full funding of foundation aid, which would put us all in much better place and it would remove or lessen the overriding burden on local property taxpayers in Brighton, which we continue to strive to make that happen. So we want to start out by saying that on the revenue side. I think you and our leadership team, cabinet leadership team, our entire staff have done an excellent job of working through this. Certainly Lou deserves extra credit and extra announcement with regard to taking a look at every single item we could to make sure that program is affected in the very least, if at all, and that we're able to continue to do new and better and ever higher under difficult circumstances. So we are thankful and appreciative of everybody's effort on that. And I think as we move forward here, we're very proud of this budget. It does keep us under the property tax cap again. It's fiscally responsible, but moreover, it is responsive to the community, to our families and our children to continue to provide what we know is a Brighton education. So thank you and we will move forward now. And I will remind the public that there are multiple opportunities to hear more about the budget if you'd like to take advantage of that slideshow again. It's also available online at we next meet here on April 24th and we'll probably have some discussion that evening also. And then just a reminder, everything we're doing right now leads up to the May 15th vote, so.
And spaghetti dinner.
Yeah, I was just going to say, and spaghetti dinner.
And the spaghetti dinner. Well, we'll have time to continue to, I'm on a budget roll right now, but the spaghetti dinner also, yes, I'm sorry. Al Lewis.
And again, thank you very much to Lou for his leadership and to each of the principals here and Dr. Baker, Mr. Rabidu for their work to really put together a very good spending plan going forward next year.
plan going forward next year that we hope the voters will see the same way.
And protective of the future, too, and we've talked about that going way back to the fall when we first started this year's effort. You know, we've got a lot coming up with our K-12 facilities project, all the capital project work, the debt service load that we're going to take on in the fairly short term. And so prudent management of everything that we're working on is going to help us in the long term, as we planned for when we put the capital project out to vote last year to the public. So thank you. And speaking of the public, in addition to PTSA meetings in the buildings coming up, you know, Kevin and I'll join you, we'll do presentations at Kiwanis, at Rotary, and at Chamber, and anyone else who will have us talk about the budget.
Anybody who doesn't run the other way.
That's exactly right. Anyone where you can plug in a projector, sit down, we'll give you a presentation. Thank you very much. And at this point, Board, it's our opportunity to, may I have a motion, please, for adoption of the 2018-2019 budget as proposed and presented by Kevin tonight?
So moved.
And approval of the 2018-2019 property tax report card.
So moved.
Second.
Well, together. So moved by Marv and seconded by Larry.
There we go. Just picking.
The property tax report card, as Kevin mentioned earlier, it's very defined and definitive and lots of detail in that, and so that's attached to the resolution for this evening's approval. And everything that Kevin presented and everything that we will bring forth, if there's anything new with that, we'll post that on the website, all the budget material will be there. And additionally, the annual budget newsletter will go out later this month to everybody's mailbox, and we'll post it online. That newsletter will have all the details on the spending plan and the budget itself, and also all of the candidate information for the Board of Education election will be included in that newsletter also. So having anything else further on the budget? Does anybody have? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. We have an approved budget. Our next item of business then relates to the election itself and the operation of that election. May we have a motion, please, for approval of the election inspectors, chief election officers, and chairpersons for the annual district vote?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Karen and seconded by Martha. Does anyone have any question or comment? This is typical and traditional, and we thank these folks who volunteer. It's a long day from 7:00 AM till 9:00 PM, and then often later, the folks who are designated for all these jobs, and we thank them for their service. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next up this evening, it is also another annual event. A motion, please, for approval of the annual BOSI's budget for 2018-2019, along with the nomination of five members to the BOSI's board.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Andrea and seconded by Karen. This is the Monroe One BOSI's budget, which we are part of and cooperatively work with them. So this is a portion of their budget that component districts are required to vote on. But moreover, it does include the nomination of five members to the BOSI's board, including our own member, Sora Sax, who has agreed to serve again, and we appreciate her service in that regard, Marv. So please pass that on to her for us. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The BOSI's folks will be pleased. Our reports section for this evening, first up, our financial report. We have previously received the executive summary on the budget status, along with the treasurer's report for the period ending February 28th, 2018, prepared by Lou, and also Dahlia Watts, our Director of Finance. May we have a motion to accept those reports, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Larry and seconded by Martha. Does anyone have any questions of Lou or any comments on those financial reports? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Our student representative report. Piper.
All righty, so in late March, we had six therapy dogs come in, and so they were in our lower library and the counseling department, and then our large group room. That was really fun. I got to pet some dogs, and it seemed like everybody was really excited. The junior prom is coming up in three weeks at St. John Fisher. It's themed, I think, Mount Olympus, which is cool, exciting. Yeah. Climate Club is doing things in theme of Earth Day this week, so they're doing various activities. Executive Council elections are coming up in two weeks, so some people have kids running, which is really exciting. I'm really excited to see who hopefully joins me and, you know, my friend Ben. And then we also have a diversity day coming up, which will have a panel of 20 students from the high school, sharing their different experiences at the high school with our entire high school faculty on a day that we have off, which is really exciting. Dr. Hall's been working really hard on it, and it should be pretty great. So that kind of sums up what's going on at the high school right now.
Wonderful. Thank you, and also thank you for representing the entire K-12 student body for Dr. McGowan's budget presentation. Take that back to us.
No pressure, none at all.
Thank you very much.
Of course.
Our Monroe County School Boards Association Standing Committees. First up, Labor Relations, which met on March 21st.
Right, right after our last meeting. And it was an update on the Health Consortium given by Scott Koval and Michael Martone from Gallagher Benefit Services. And they have, well, I've got a whole bunch of slides and stuff here, but basically, they're apparently in very good shape, and they're going to go to self-insure. I guess it was a very, it was a tough decision, and they had some problems last year, but it looks like everything is in the box.
I would call it a long, drawn-out process. Cumbersome, but now will be reaping some benefits from that moving forward now that that's in place.
And the next meeting is next week, no, I'm sorry, two weeks, 25th. And Bruce Capron is going to talk about special ed. Let's see where this topic is. Special ed, education update.
Okay, yeah, I think he's going to do, he usually does update on economics.
Trends in economics and financial aid.
And stuff like that, yeah. And Bruce is great, does a lot of presentation work, and so that'll be well-attended, I'm sure. Thank you very much. Information Exchange, March 14th.
I was not able to go.
That was another, I shouldn't say it that way, it was an opioid.
Right.
Program, which is probably the fourth program or fifth program that we, as board members, have been exposed to, which goes to the deepening problem.
And the importance with which everyone is taking it.
Exactly, the education around it. So that program was held on the 14th. And on, the next up is April 18th. We have to make a special note of April 18th.
I know, I've got it right here.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's okay. Our topic is communicating with stakeholders, and our very own Dan Goldman is one of the presenters, so.
Five communication specialists are going to be doing that, including.
Dan.
The fabulous Dan Goldman.
That's exactly right.
I'm pretty sure it's already, might be full, but there might be some standing room.
Might be, standing room, perhaps.
Get registered early, right.
We're excited. But Dan is so great, so we're excited that he's doing that.
That's a good group they put together.
It is.
So that would be an interesting program.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Legislative Committee, we did report out on our previous one, yeah, because of the calendar. Tomorrow we meet. We have a meeting tomorrow, and we are scheduled to update on all of the legislative comings and goings with the final budget language, talk about possible spring meetings. We usually try to put together spring meetings with our local representatives, especially because this year, there are a number of issues that got sort of tossed out of the budget at the last minute. Of course, that always happens, that could still rear their heads while session is in place, so we may want to do that. I think also, there's a draft position paper that I think we're going to take a look at tomorrow on school safety and security.
Sure, sure, and particularly about funding.
Funding, correct, exactly, where the funding sources for they're going to come from. So that's tomorrow, and we'll report on that. One thing I would remind us all, the School Boards Association Annual Meeting is Wednesday, May 23rd. So we'll get a, we'll get a sort of a formal invitation on that probably in about a week or so, and then if you can attend, that's great, as many of us that can go, we'll go. All right, thank you very much, Marv. Anything, we approved the BOSI's budget, anything else for BOSI's?
Well, the annual meeting is again this Thursday, and you are all invited. I'm sure you're just dying to come.
You usually attend.
I'll be there.
And how many other board members from this side of the county besides you attending?
Last year, I think only me.
The last couple of years.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Thank you very much for attending on our behalf. We sincerely appreciate that. Other board member reports since we last got together and did this. Andrea?
Well, the social studies evaluation, we met on March 1st and went through teacher surveys and student surveys, curriculum maps. We meet on April 18th to complete the analysis and summary and make recommendations to move forward.
Okay.
And then the Wellness Committee, we met a couple weeks ago, and we've got a big day coming up this fall, so it's Sunday, October 14th. Put it on your calendars now. It's at the Brighton Farmers Market, and we're going to have a big focus on wellness, and our committee will be there, and we've got focusing on nutrition, the Brighton Breathes, physical fitness and athletics, recycling, community service. We're hoping to get students, maybe student music groups, and representation from some of the extracurricular clubs and the PTSA. So that's, we're working through that.
So that's this Sunday, so that's.
October 14th.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were back to the fall.
We're working on that. This is a big fall project that we're working on.
Right, right, right. We'll be back outside in a month and back at the regular prom.
Exactly. So that's our big.
Okay, so a lot of work to do to put that together.
Yeah, pretty cool.
Great, thank you very much. Anything else new in your world? Okay. Larry?
I think since the last time we met, we did tech and career ed. I can't remember the date because we.
21st of March.
21st, so it was right after.
Yeah, we spent that whole.
Doing the right up and getting prepared to do a presentation here at the Board. We've got a really interesting set of findings, excited to sort of have that read out with those folks, just a really great group of people to be working with, so excited about that.
Yep, great. And that group, I think we've talked about, May, early June-ish.
I thought it was the second meeting in May.
Yeah, I think that's what we talked about. So a lot of, typically, as we do curriculum reviews, that's what usually happens, we get into May or the very early June sometimes, but then receive those reports from those groups that have put all that effort in, starting last summer, most of them, so. Karen?
The art program evaluation has moved pretty much to the same point as the social studies group. They're reviewing the data that they've gathered from student focus groups and putting together what will become the presentation to the board.
Great.
And the big groups that we're both a part of haven't met in recent months, so we've got some upcoming things.
Right, we've got some of the meetings coming up, Curriculum Council and Diversity Equity meeting, we had to reschedule a couple of dates, right.
So I've got to put a plug in again for Brighton Education Fund, because I attended this afternoon, Kevin was able to attend also. They brought in at two super creative teacher requests, Jenny Mull and Rachel Landon.
Lobber.
Lobber, thank you very much, and I apologize, Rachel, I met her today, she's delightful. They brought in a group to work with our strings called Moxie Strings. It's a super, it's a duo.
We have a concert tonight.
Yes, they are, which is so unfortunate that we cannot be there, because.
No, no, we could. I'm sure.
Let's just go.
Hurry up. I'm sure there'll be video.
I know. Well, anyways, I went to the instructional, one of the instructional pieces during the day, and they had hour sessions with high school kids, sixth graders, and then seventh and eighth graders, and they brought everybody into the, into the high school auditorium in those hours, piece of time. Well, it was amazing. This is an amazing duo. They instruct the kids, they talk to the kids, they play with the kids. It was so cool. When it came through Brighton Education Fund, we're like, you really? I mean, there's nobody else that can do this, this is like, they're from Michigan, we really... They've got it going on. They were so great, the kids totally responded. It was such a fun, fun hour. You could see the kids were, we were there for the sixth graders, so they were just in awe of these two young women up there playing the coolest music ever on their strings. I mean, just the coolest stuff. And Jody, I went with Jody, and she said, you know that there is someone in that group whose life has changed forever because of that, and that is what Brighton Education Fund is all about, and I really, really applaud that group and what they're, what they're doing. Because I'm sure the concert tonight is like phenomenal.
Yeah, that's great.
It was great.
Videoing it also, I'm sure.
Yes, they are, they are videoing it.
We'll have it in our archive, but thank you very much.
I can't wait to see it.
Marv, you just returned.
Yes, I did.
Just returned from San Antonio. You might say sunny San Antonio, but wasn't all that sunny.
I got news for you. You didn't miss anything, weather.
You didn't, it was better than here.
Yeah, no, a few nasty days, but it was okay. It was, got up to the 70s and 80s a couple of days.
Oh.
And you were there for?
For the National School Board Association Meeting, and I will have a brief written report sometime in the next couple of weeks. Andrea mentioned the social studies review next week. Teacher Center Policy Board on the 24th is going to review Advancing Learning Spaces, a program we've had for several years, and faculty put in applications, and we're going to review them and then parcel out the gifts, and yeah, that's it.
Okay, and thank you for attending. I give you a hard time sometimes, but you always volunteer to attend the National School Boards Association Convention for us, almost all the time.
Almost.
And do it prudently, but it's important that we send somebody to that, and you come back with material and information, as you mentioned, you'll do a report.
And a weather report.
Yeah. Well, I'll tell you.
Anywhere is better than here, Larry.
But to be perfectly honest, you get to meet some interesting people from around the country, and you find out, you have to say, my God, well, thank God for Brighton.
I have to tell you, when you go, you know, it's interesting, because when you leave New York State, you know, we understand New York State public education to some extent. At our state convention, you meet people from all over the state, but when you leave and learn about how school districts are organized and run around the country, and you meet school board members from around the country, you're absolutely correct. You come back and you think, you know, we're not perfect here. Holy cow, we're pretty good. We at least have a clue of what we've got going on.
You betcha.
Thank you very much. Two quick things for me, and they are two of those things that just make being a board member in Brighton one of those most fantastic things that you could ever be thankful for. Read Across America Day at FRES on the 20th, which is just such a delightful experience to sit with those kids and watch them, watch your book, and read, and the questions that they have, and, you know, you could do that all day, and it's just such a wonderful thing. And the other thing was, on the 22nd, the Board was able to meet with the BHS Student Senate, which again is an annual event for us, and we spend about an hour with them, and they ask us questions, and we have great dialogue, great discussion, and you know, I say this a lot, but I mean it so fervently. The more we just sit and listen to our kids talk, and the more we listen to them talk with each other, the better off we all are, and those are two examples of just great things and great feedback for a board member, so.
Mentioning Read Across America, I read to fifth graders and got, had the opportunity to meet a little deaf girl who was in this class, and when I walked in and started signing, her eyes lit up, oh, yeah.
You never know.
And we got to talking, and I said, what's your name? And she, Kane was her last name. I said, yeah, what's your dad's name? My dad, mom went down to the idea, really? Michael Kane, oh, one of my former students.
Oh, my gosh.
I said, my God.
You just never, never know. It's small world.
And you know, one more thing about the Moxie Strings that I forgot, when they were asking the kids, you know, how long have you been playing, now they're sixth were asking the kids, you know, how long have you been playing, now they're sixth graders, how long have you been playing instruments? We started in sixth grade, is what they told this group, and they shared that we start in fourth grade here. Totally impressed. The duo was like, you started in fourth grade here? That's pretty cool.
That's, there you go. That's another one of those things that we talk about, that we make sure happens every year.
Yeah, that's Brighton.
All right, our Brighton Teachers Association report. Beth?
Hi, good evening, welcome back, everybody. The PTA is really, really busy, but this is probably one of my shortest reports. I think it was the timing in terms of the break, so there's a lot going on, and I'm sure that you'll hear from me in the next couple of meetings with lots of things, but just a couple of things I want to share. Lori Iannello, part of our wonderful music department at French Road. The fourth graders have begun their ukulele instruments, and they're playing and strumming and loving life. I hear about the ukuleles all the time when my kids come back to class. Renee Weidor, fifth grade teacher, she wanted to share a couple of things. The fifth grade teachers, they participated in a workshop and planning session with BOSI's instructors Cheryl Doberton and Mary Beth Elko on holding celebrations of learning. And this professional learning opportunity was a great tie-in to their second annual fifth grade Integrated Social Studies and ELA Human Rights Celebration of Learning, and that's going to be held this year on May 18th. So the teachers attended the half-day session with their PLCs, their professional learning community members, to plan how students will present their own learning journey with this common fifth grade experience, so that's always exciting for them. The second thing Renee wanted to report out was that the fifth grade teachers are continuing their grade-level book study and professional focus on fostering growth mindset. Teachers share and discuss classroom meeting activities, learning center displays, and student work at every monthly team meeting. Teachers are reading and applying concepts and teaching strategies from two professional texts, one, A Mindset for Learning, and then the other one, The Morning Meeting, and this study is in its second year, so fifth grade is doing a lot of wonderful things with growth mindset and doing a book study, which is really neat professionally for them. The other piece, the E3 Fair Competition Results from the 12 Corners Middle School, I'm not going to read it all, there's a lot going on, a lot of students. Forty-one members of the TCMS E3 Club participated in the Engineering Exploration and Experimentation Technology Fair, which took place at RIT on Monday, March 26th. It will be up on the website if you want to see all the names, but there were multiple options to participate, and we had first place, second place, and third place winners through all of these options, which was great. And Mr. Priola and Mrs. Hookway, who were the mentoring piece and really were the force behind that, they wanted to congratulate and thank all the members of the club for participating, and they wanted to give a special thank you to Jordan Stolberg, Richard Coon, Jason Platt, and Noam Ari for assisting the students and being our Brighton High School mentors. Great job, everyone. So if you want to see all of those 41 members and how they did, feel free to turn into the website.
Great.
That's it.
All right, thank you very much.
Sure.
Appreciate that. And we have a special guest from PTSA this evening. Welcome, Leslie Seltzer, and you were going to present the PTSA report tonight.
Yes, I am. This is Emily Odeyambo's report. At Council Rock School, the Council Rock Book Fair was held on Monday, March 19th, and Tuesday, March 20th. They had, they held a meeting with the principal, which included a budget presentation, and their next meeting will be on April 25th. The teacher appreciation luncheon is scheduled for May 25th. At French Road Elementary School, they held a family movie night on March 27th. They collected canned foods at the event that were donated to the Brighton Food Cupboard. Their next meeting with the principal is April 18th at 7:00, and Chief Mark Henderson will be there to discuss bike and pedestrian safety. FRES is doing a yearbook this year. Sales will begin April 9th. The books will cost $17, and there will be a contest among the students to design the front cover, which is exciting. Also coming up are the two ice cream socials, which will be held on April 19th and the 26th. And finally, an author visit is in the works for May 15th. The author is Brian Yanish, and they'll have books for sale prior to the event. 12 Corners Middle School, the book fair was held over three days and raised approximately The new seventh grade activity night is scheduled for this Friday, April 13th. Hopefully it won't be snowed out again. That's making up for another snowed-out one on March 2nd. The eighth grade closure party is on June 16th, and PTSA is now recruiting volunteers for the activity. We need many volunteers for that. At the high school, Senior Bash is on the horizon on May 24th. PTSA also needs volunteers for that. Please plan to support one of the last hurrahs for the class of 2018. The meeting with the principal was on March 21st, and it was held with Captain David Cotholdi. For sped, coming up on April 25th at noon in Room 252 at BHS, and at 7:00 PM in the library classroom at TCMS, is a presentation about executive functioning by Dr. Whitney Rap, which she did that presentation last year. It's really fascinating. And finally, for Central PTSA, April's meeting will be tomorrow, April 11th at 9:15, and Kevin will be on hand to present the budget again, if you want to hear it again.
No joke.
And next month's meeting will be on May 9th at 9:15. That's it.
Thank you very much, Leslie. You never can have too much budget.
You're not.
Well, you know, you got to make sure you...
You got to make sure you're putting it here until you memorize it.
Speaking of which, Dr. McGowan, superintendent's report.
In all sincerity and solemnity, I just wanted to point out something that we hadn't had a chance to talk about before in previous meetings, but over the past month, we lost an incredible friend to the district, to this community, and our congressional representative, Louise Swatter. And I just want to take a moment to recognize her service, but also to pause for a moment in silence to recognize her work for the entire community. Thank you very much, and thanks, Sarah, for all that she did for our kids, for her family here in the district, who's been such great supporters of ours, and everything that we owe to her as an incredible congressional representative and institution.
And Kevin, if I could just share, because we've all shared stories since Louise's passing, and you know, she always had a special place in her heart for Brighton, you know, with her grandchildren attending here, and we would always see her, and I told this story to somebody recently, and it just, I saw her, my wife Jean met her when Jean went on the Women's March to Washington last year, and spent quite a bit of time in the office, and they had talked about, you know, Jean's business downtown and some other things that they were working on, and they kind of made a little bit of connection. Anyway, at Crazy for You, Louise sat right across the aisle from us that night, we were there, and talked to her a little bit at intermission when she got up, and so I've met her over the years, I mean, when we've done advocacy work, it's mostly her staff, but I've met her, she comes to every event that we've had, Schools to Watch at Middle School, and she's just so supportive of us, and she would always kind of know me, and I'd say, Mark Oconan, School Board President, oh yeah, she always said the same, y'all do a really good job. And that's what she said to me that night at the play, and the quick interaction, and that was only, that was very quick, maybe three weeks prior to her passing, so she, not only for all she's done for our area and her, certainly her congressional district, but the special place that she has always had for the Brighton School District, and the appreciation for what I think we've all brought forward, so I appreciate you bringing that up, because unfortunately, in meeting schedule vacation-wise, we really didn't get a chance to talk about that, so.
I want to make sure we recognize that, so. And in terms of things in the district, Piper covered most of it much better than I, but of course, spring sports are underway.
We're going to start putting you first.
It's hard to believe outside. Piper gets it all. We did do pizza with the chief recently also, and really having a conversation around security often, and I think it's important for the community to know that we continue to think with the Brighton Police about how our safety plans are deployed, what our staffing looks like, how to make sure that we continue to provide the safest environment we can for our kids and for our families, and that will continue. We've done focus groups in each of the buildings, or we're in the process of doing that with staff members, solicit feedback to bring back to the Safety Committee, which you're a part of, of course, Mark, but also the chief is, and Captain Cutholdy, several other members of the Police Department, and staff from throughout the district, so we'll continue to do that. And it's also important for the community to know that beginning Monday, we will have new attendance procedures, and families will receive a robo-call very early in the morning, not long after the start of the day, from each of the buildings, not a personal phone call, but a recorded phone call to simply say that their child has been recorded as absent, and if they haven't yet called in, families who, by the way, have already done so, are all set, but if they haven't called in that they should, that their child has been recorded as absent, and we're thinking very deeply about how to make sure our attendance procedures are very clear, efficient, and effective, because that, of course, is the most important thing we do, is keep kids safe. So, just want to make sure the community's aware of that, and there will be messaging that goes out around that as well.
Right. And if I could add, we haven't talked a lot about it, because partly, safety and security, some of the things that we do are inherently things that we keep fairly quiet in terms of what's ongoing, but I would say, at some point, before the end of the school year, we'll ask Lou to provide an update, you know, as far as the work of the Safety Committee, but I can, I think we talked a little bit about this at last PTSA meeting, a couple of parents asked questions. We would reassure the community that the safety and security of our buildings, the safety of our children, our staff, parents, is of the utmost concern. It's what we, you know, worry about every single day and strive to make sure that we've done everything we possibly can do. We have always evaluated and reevaluated all those procedures, and when something occurs, like unfortunately has occurred over the past few months more than once, we continue to reevaluate, look at what occurred, are there similar circumstances we can learn from, and that is an ongoing process, it's been ongoing now for a number, a couple of months, and we'll continue to go forward with that, and some of the items that are budget items are included in an area to take further steps, and we'll continue to talk about that and advise the community as appropriate going forward.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. A couple of other items of business this evening. May we please have a motion to approve construction bid, Phase 1 Brighton Facilities Improvement Plan, please?
So moved.
Seconded. Moved by Marv, seconded by Larry. This is a memo to Kevin, prepared by Lou, and our construction manager, Campus Construction, and this is related to the 2017 Brighton Facilities Improvement Plan. This is Phase 1, and this includes what we are asking for approval on, includes the construction and installation of a new track, a new running track, a new turf field, tennis court reconstruction, to be done this summer really, as soon as possible to the end of the school year. So, does anyone have any questions, further comments on that? And thanks to Lou, thanks to Campus Construction, all of our people that we work so diligently with now on our facilities improvement project, and also, we appreciate the haste with which they are working to try to get some of these things done as soon as possible. We know we've got plans down the road, but to try to get everything done and get through State Education Department approval, so that we can do work on a timely basis is really, really important, and we appreciate their efforts on that. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then another bid award this evening, not quite to that level, but approval, please, a motion to approve the cooperative bid for art supplies?
So moved. Seconded.
Moved by Andrea and seconded by Martha, and this is, as our custom typically with a lot of supplies, we have a cooperative bid through BOSI's too, and these are art supplies for the period, April 1st through March 31st, 2019. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And our consent agenda this evening is short. May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Martha, seconded by Larry. It doesn't include, it does include one gift that we are acknowledging tonight, and we are very appreciative. The Brighton Central PTSA has approved a grant of $1,900 for the BHS Senior Parade. Purpose of the grant is to provide assistance and reimbursement of expenses to cover the